... What to give, you know, to the year, what's coming up.
Yep.
It's a form. Didn't have to come out later on.
You got your automatic?
Automatic, yeah.
Man.
Yeah.
So we found somebody that can fix it?
That's what Kenny ordered.
No, I don't think, I'm still working on it. I haven't ever fixed any of it.
Max, I'll keep fixing things. Oh, I am so disappointed.
Don't give up on me yet.
Okay, I'm done.
Give me another three months.
I like this report right here. Jet ticket file. Two hours, four thirty. About thirty-four hours, five mother and one truck tire. One hot truck.
Little Doc, we was talking about, you know, on the counter room. Y'all didn't fix it. Somebody else, that little dozer come up there and fixed it, you know. Fred Bice told, yes, he, he'd been talking to Jack and he couldn't understand what Jack was talking about. Needed something to be fixed and I told Fred, I said, I, I think that's what he talked about. He just don't know, somebody done put it back and I don't know who. I don't know who that dozer was.
What's that kipper?
Well, we only got a lot of red, it's already done, but...
In the bag, man. You have a big weekend? Well, that's good.
Pretty, pretty calm.
Went on a flat weekend, a flat, quiet weekend?
That's the plan, just like, if I can make it through Wednesday.
Oh, man.
I need to know whether I, I need to lay off more lines.
No, as far as, as far as I know.
You're not going to pose any deal, sorry. I, I need to know how many lines, aren't I?
No, it wasn't a picture of that, did it, or what? No, I'm good.
You're okay?
Okay, I'm good.
Man, I see my mom is more about nine-oh, I don't know, you know, I'm resigned, no picture of that. Yeah, try to black out that P and A, turn that methane corner, circle. See if I would sleep through it. John, sure we can? Do you work this weekend?
Yes, we do.
New doc, is New doc, is she in here all the time there, or is she still back and forth, or what's she doing?
He's here all day.
Okay, now, what about his kids? Are they here?
He's got two, here right now, I think.
Then the old ones still in, growing. Where can we get it?
Anchored off the coast of Brazil.
Man, you got it made, haven't you?
Coast of the beach?
Um, they had a major malfunction of some of their equipment, so they had to go back.
So they're gonna tie them up?
Yeah. And you want, lucky nobody got killed.
That can...
That's a serious malfunction, when you talk like that.
Some big piece of them. It's part of the caravan, I just told the tape about, it's uh... But it's got big pulleys on it and everything. And it broke off.
It broke off the bed that shipped, that boat broke.
So, they're uh, they need to go back to Brazil to get it fixed.
Did you give me a month of that?
Okay, that week.
Did you? Did you give me a copy of your month of the board?
I just owe you one. You don't have one.
See if I do. I don't know, I found it. I don't want to get it, she's taking money out. I'll just give you some options.
You'd get back there though.
Yeah, but then that would be on camera all the time, say.
You're gonna call it a wide there.
You're just a real, you're a moose, aren't you?
Oh, no. You're out on that limb, oh, you know.
I found it, it was stuck in page.
We just use that one to sign this paper clip and then they don't have to unassemble it.
You don't need some fishing, love? Do you get any water?
Nobody tell me they'll die.
No kidding?
So if you don't keep digging while back.
It's fine.
Golden algae, golden algae.
Yeah, golden algae. I know that, like earlier, before all that, you drive all the way around, buddy.
So you, where are you fishing at now, lower?
Lower, I ain't been one time.
So did you boat been?
So boat, I ain't, I'm, I'm, I've got left a few, but I'm gonna go two minutes.
If I really afraid of what sells and shows that people disappear off the boat, then husbands just...
That's an idea?
Yeah, she, she misses them.
We don't have that address. Like, that's the one you're gonna come up, make sure you put it well, because I'm walking.
She attempted.
Bring your bag, your boat wouldn't get rid of it by then. Oh, man. Yeah, find it, yeah, buy a towel for it.
John.
John, I need that.
Page, start that trip.
I, I'm gonna have to move it in.
You know, you could be kinda like a mobile commissioner, you could just work the whole county.
Yeah.
You know, set up and did some areas.
That's hard.
No, you can, you can go stay away. I'll call Ricky and see if he can get you a payroll from there. You want me to do that?
Pay pay.
Yeah.
At large.
Is that on yet?
Yes, ma'am. Patty, I'll try to dub that out as well. No, no.
From the knee down.
If I come down with golden algae, you know what?
Have y'all done with the bill already?
Believe it or not.
Ah, wait.
Let me make y'all a copy of this, so you can tell me your name.
We should have fish it short, I think. Look at this table, this table ain't here, but let's see it.
You think we, this is big.
Yeah. It's holding you. I guess it can do. I'll be in the water, you know, the water.
Are you gonna write, you know, talk again?
Yeah, me, yeah, true. Yeah, true.
I saw, uh, Danny go there the other day. Danny cost my, Danny cost my, left it off, it's first. Still, we could've taken one more.
Trying to get organized.
Seems like one of them.
Huh? A little disjointed this one.
We just take turns running.
It's so young, over there. I know, I had. It's important that Chastain's versatile, probably for the last time, I don't know.
My God, that was a big old pussy, wanted to call this the commission's court order. Monday, September tenth, November fifteenth, county. Uh, first order on the agenda is paid bills. Any discussion or questions or comments today is a bill. Motion paid bills. Have a motion paid bills, have a second? Got a second? All in favor? Both? I'm probably, I'm a little disjointed, I called y'all all night last week, didn't get into like yesterday afternoon. Hope it's good, be schooled, I'm saying it's home. I'm trying to do things now that I normally do on Friday.
And we're running ahead, huh?
And y'all come early today. Item number two is the content list. Uh, y'all have an opportunity to look over the minutes in the previous meeting, we have the regular meeting and two special... Minutes for two special meetings. Any questions, comments, or changes that need to be made, if you can see them?
Um, there's one on the second page, next to last.
Regular meeting?
Regular meeting, um, special.
Regular meeting. August twenty-seventh.
Okay, second page?
Yeah. Um, Kent County had been unable to make contact with Stonewall County through the radio. It's, it's not with this new frequency, because they don't have that up yet. So the, the frequency that they're using now, they couldn't transmit to us on, so I don't know how to even word that. I was wondering if they...
Where the ones that have the new frequency?
Yeah, but, but they, 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 they weren't trying to contact us over the new frequency.
No.
The old standard frequency, we still operating it too.
Yeah.
Okay, with the old frequency?
Yeah.
Okay.
And frankly, I didn't get a chance to talk to him about that, I'm going to.
Hey, what's the D A B trust?
The what?
D A B trust.
Oh, you don't say, it's a court suit, uh, it's a trust fund that, it, it pays. They send it to me and I put it in the trust fund, because it's tied up in court suit, so it's more or something.
Any other, any other changes on the minutes? Freshen these, both both, and I should make a good call of order, no longer here for the public, for the lady we're doing. Well, now, Melinda was here, wasn't she? She didn't have any...
Why the church?
We couldn't get her to come in, no word.
She's not here. A blank sheet, that's right.
Uh, and the visit, at the top.
Why did you get it?
I just come for the visiting.
Yeah.
This, this circle, question, she's poor.
I wish she'd get her position.
Yeah, is it paid position, or visitor? Let me see that job description again.
First report, I want to, one, I want to notice on the county district clerk report this time, county court, actually have more of these in the district court, uh...
Let me enlighten you.
I think that was true.
That county court was because there were four new probate cases.
Yes.
Filed. But it wasn't probation thing.
And, yeah, and probates have been busy here lately, I'm glad I went to the scoop this week. But I just wanted to note, because that doesn't happen often. And then, uh, treasurer's hunt in the fourth.
Your... This one we have, Delaney, trust?
Yeah.
You still put good, it's just a stack of it.
And they pick me on, chucking them. I thought she was... I was worried earlier, and um, I don't know.
What do we have to do with that?
What?
What do we have to do with that?
Well, we'll just have to sign it, put it in the, in the minutes. I doubt, I've got him, he was just saying, pass around.
Is that something new?
Actually, no, it's, it's uh...
Just a new deal for us?
It hasn't been doing it, but it, but it, it required by statute that that be a written order. John, excuse me, just maybe, or y'all.
Thank you. Uh, wait, I only want to put that to you. You want one? My first flip back, that's kind of special. Here, he's taking my bud, this thing.
Is that carpool, this carpool?
It is.
Well, after, after this stuff, I'll, I'll talk to you. Have any questions about the, other than one down, had about four minutes, and playing on tax assets, this first order of treasurer's report. entertain a motion. And make the motion to approve the consent list with changes made on the minutes. Have a second, David, all in favor? Consider treasurer's notification to vestment change. Don't have to sign that one. That should finish off this, this, since we only have twenty days left in this fiscal year, so we should be covered.
With it?
Yes, that will finish this off, and should give us enough money to not moving anymore.
Of course, that's kind of a misnomer there, we've got twenty days left in this fiscal year, but it still has to operate through the first month of the next fiscal year.
And, and part of that money is maybe in case they get the word done, or something.
Does that, does this figure out here reflect that, uh, Amy?
No.
This, this seven ninety-nine, that little pile will come off, that, this one forty-two, they're gonna have a little five, little, little...
That's what we took out, so, we could just see how much we had.
But we're taking the world five out of that year, but that's what I'm playing, we're gonna take another world five here and there. That's new for us, we have last year.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I mean, really.
Yeah, we've done it really well.
We really have.
Two months.
You just can't put my revenue together.
We try to operate on a twelve and ten.
Twelve and twelve?
I don't know how these folks operate on a twelve and ten, I, I haven't seen that.
It's a great argument, right, that is.
Any questions or comments on the treasurer's notification, vestment change? Do we have a motion to approve? Dave make a motion to approve, have a second? Of course, second, all in favor? Okay, the next item, approve tax assets, collect this bond renewal. And it's just a hand sign comes up, you're on the, you're on bond. Actually, he has, he's bonded, has two bonds, is that correct, Patty? Yeah. Tax assets had actually two bonds, and this is, this is one of them, usually so.
Just repaid for another one, couple of months ago.
Yeah.
Was it a continuing motion?
Yeah, this is eight thousand, eight thousand four hundred dollar bond from tax assets. Present to taxes, tax code, and section, and section two, that he has.
Wow. The comp is eight hundred?
No, 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 that's what the bond is, it's, I think it's what, fifty dollars or a hundred dollars, forty something.
But children's, I think, I think.
Huh?
I think children's, I think.
I think, huh, whatever.
There's insurance, or...
They were working cutting gifts today. Because they've got problems, they wouldn't talk.
As you knew, Andrew, trying to fall out with me.
Just, it's a gift, you told him, Clark. Where the hell, where the hell you are? You don't just think me, you are. Where'd you go, Perry?
Something's going there, it's working. We don't have time off, yes.
We're just having a trip.
Is this good?
Yes, I, if, if, if we prove it, yeah. Any questions coming about the tax of this bond, we have a motion to approve. January seventh, approved, Gary, you got a second, you hold a favor? Same thing now, and the next item, number this time is the sheriffs, I mean, bond. Bond renewal.
What's the number of companies in the same place?
Huh?
Did they count from the same place?
Question, you're, because our bond is... There's, there's a number of, of bonding companies, there's only really two, the triple A rated bond companies, western sheriffs is one of them.
All the way on the link.
With that, Patty, I just had that. We have a motion to approve, sure, bond renewal. Got a motion.
Go ahead, Dave.
Dave make a motion, Bill Kirk second, all in favor? Item number six. Hmm, what the, we need is to authorize the clerk to deputize two new clerks.
They get guns?
While he's grassing.
I did a big squad for him.
Can we, can we play?
Do we really want to do this?
Yeah, let me say, now wait a minute, when I went to school...
There ought to be something we can extract out of you, always.
When I went to school, at the table next to me was six people wearing guns.
Kind of school was you at, and where was that?
At Clark's School, at Clark's School, at Austin, and so we asked and we said, and they had books just like we did, and we said, "Why are y'all wearing guns?" And they said, "Well, uh, we're, we're investigators." We said, "Well, why are you taking this class?" They said, "They make us," so, but they were all wearing guns.
What, Secretary of State's office?
Can we start wearing guns?
Yeah, Secretary of State, he did money.
We are, we're guns.
Packing.
Were they investigators for the Secretary of State's office?
So, she said they were.
They're sitting there taking the same class, and they all wear guns on.
Bring a bigger gun, she's, she's music in there, that's more. I don't know, you're a nit.
Bet y'all school don't wear guns.
Do we have a motion to authorize a clerk to deputize her too, you deputies down there? Soon to be deputy, that's, I suppose, a good place.
Candidates, that's candidates.
Candidate, candidate deputies, at this point. Who never...
Uh, yeah, he'll, he'll. Given their own?
Yeah, it's, they got an open, little sign on it. Get y'all authorized, so, you wanna look at them?
Look, look.
At the bottom, I'll, I'll administer that oath there on the bottom. Get the picture, thank you. Uh, I think this will be a private, or a very limited, simple one, but take that.
Kirk make a motion, one second.
Oh, y'all already done it, you got a motion in a second, all in favor? Only, uh... Budget coming up, we have a revenue increase. Three hundred ninety two thousand eight hundred fifty five dollars and eighty four cents. Uh, in order to do that, we have to, as a body, approve.
Like they didn't know we were doing it?
Hmm.
Like we didn't know we were doing it? I mean, that's.
No, it's just, in order for us to have a, a, to increase our revenue, we have to approve that. We did last year.
I think so.
Huh?
I, I guess so.
You mean, we can't take any extra revenue unless we approve? Is that it?
That's how it's gonna happen. Yeah, it's like you approve.
That's, that's what we're.
Northside check, approve.
We approve, we approve any revenue increase. Then we approve the budget that author, that, that authorize that, that increase, and then we have to approve. Tax rate. Has to be done in that oath.
I think this proof can get it. Oh, yeah. Turn that down, boy.
Are you putting that more than most, approve revenue increase? David, David made the motion, have a second? Would that your?
I'll say that, yeah.
All in favor of approving.
Yeah, I'll, I'll say.
Next item, again, is a, adopt fiscal, uh, fiscal year twenty thirteen budget. Budget is, you all have copies of, uh. We made two minor corrections. One was corrected typo of a one dollar on, on one of our deputy clerks salary. And then we voted last time to approve the district attorney's increase in, in, uh, salary because his attendance at the juvenile justice. We added that to that budget. And obviously, there are only two changes that's been made since, since we approved. One of the budget. Do we have any discussion on the budget, any questions? We, we've been hating this thing for three months now.
Any, um, I mean, other than we, we held our meetings and nobody showed up, does anybody?
I've not had any comments. Have you, Andy? Did anybody come in the clerk's office and reviewed the budget, had any comments to make on it, Patty?
Other than that cover sheet that, um, Andy picks the cover sheet, that's not actually the, the budget.
Yeah. Just, actually, we, we made, actually, the only two changes been made, I think, was, one was the, the, the type graph player of a, of a one, one dollar on, I think, fifty salary. And then added the, the approval of the district attorneys, or increase in salary, David, you need to have it.
David's actually the one that pointed that out.
I'm concerned about the cover sheet, what happened there?
I had the wrong years on the cover sheet.
But ours was that, and that was. Have you?
I do not know that. I get on.
Can you step up closer to camera, explain that?
No.
And it's, and it's. This budget is, it's, it's a. It's gonna allow, we've got a balanced budget, and it's gonna allow us to do some things that, that's necessary to do during, uh, the one, uh, the principal thing is, of course, there. Pretty well neglected since nineteen eighty four when it was built. This, this, this little increase in this thing gonna allow us to do some work out there that's sorely needed, as David as well. Do we have any questions or discussions on the budget?
I make a hundred and seventy. Twenty thirteen budget.
Adopt it?
Yes, adopt the twenty thirteen budget.
Gary's made a motion, do we have a second? Mr. Harris made a second. All in favor of adopting the full budget of twenty thirteen? And now that we've. That we proved an increase in revenues with adopted the budget, and now it comes to adopting the tax rate, uh, made all of you a copy, uh, order setting of the tax rate. Pardon me? Yeah, I handed it to you.
Yeah, right there.
The statute requires that we state this in order. And, and, uh, if you're a motion down there in the, in the old black, that's also. Present to chapter twenty six, states the tax code. Uh, we have to have that statement in there in bold. And see, this tax rate will approach more re, will raise more taxes for maintenance and operations than last year's tax rate. Tax rate will technically be raised at twenty five point two percent, but because of the increase in values to the county, the amount of taxes paid on a hundred thousand dollar home will be reduced by approximately sixty six dollars and fifty six. We're actually raising more revenues, but we're reducing our tax rate, which is giving our tax local property owners a break on taxes. And that's, we found ourselves in a good situation.
We could do that every year.
I wish we could do that every year, yeah. Uh?
Not where it rates like that. Yeah, where you reduce your taxes by sixty six dollars.
Yeah, reduce taxes, but at the same time, an increase in revenue by what, so that's a pretty good situation to be in. Any questions or comments about oversetting the tax rate for fiscal year twenty thirteen? Oh, and that tax rate, I guess I should mention, on here is, uh, forty eight point one five cents per hundred dollars in back, is what the new tax rate is. This year, that we're just ending, that tax rate was fifty four point eight cents.
Eighty.
Pardon?
Fifty four point eighty.
Fifty forty?
Fifty four, fifty four point eighty. Eighty, about eighty.
Fifty four point eighty. Fifty four point eight cents.
What was the first day you did forty eight point eight?
I'm not, my hearing aid is not working real well this morning.
What was the first day you did forty eight point?
Forty eight, yeah, forty eight point one five cents per hundred dollars in back.
Combined tax rate.
Yeah. That's the combined tax rate. We settled them out individually a couple of meetings ago. And this, this is the combined tax rate, which is what we're, this item, but. Fifty four point eight.
Zero.
Huh?
A zero.
You don't have to put a zero on your, that's.
She won't.
Anyhow, we're, we're reducing from fifty four point eight this year to forty eight point one five for the coming year.
This basically what we're doing.
Six point six five cents per hundred. And quit throwing me under the bus, the guitar tracks on my back, it's the best.
I do not. I'm so ashamed of it. It made me really hurt.
Maybe, yeah.
It just, you know, come in.
You were not, you were, you were not in my statement at all. That was Commissioner Hoyt.
But it, but it insinuated.
No, no. You took my statement, you took my, Commissioner Hoyt, you took my statement and added Miss Lola to it. You're sick. For the record, I had said it to.
You were very quiet.
But he wasn't quiet, Andy. He was laughing.
I was loud, but the nickname is the call of use. Oh, it's why I live.
No. Oh, she had nothing to do with my statement. That was all you.
Do we have a motion?
I don't know.
We're in the order saying, it says the tax rate for fiscal year twenty thirteen at forty eight point one five cents per hundred dollars in back.
Combined tax rate.
Combined tax rate.
I'll do that.
We have a motion by Commissioner Mersch, do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Hoyt, all in favor? So, your twenty thirteen tax rate is now set at point four eight one five on a hundred dollar value. I guess I'll get past it, find yourself. Brian, sir?
Part of it.
First, Colonel?
Boyd Land? The whites are just waiting.
I'm going back now, dude, that'd be great. I actually saw it on there.
Take the boys, Mr. Lee, send it on, Howard?
From what's your name?
I guess it.
Go, go leave the sign all signed. Patty, I need to make a copy of that with the signatures. I'll get it sometime, so I can put it in the file.
Yes, sure.
We are moving on, then, guys. I don't know if you can overfill.
Uh. Say, if you want to do it at, at the airport? Question, I feel on it so far and everything, they still like, no, I think, uh, south end.
They still like a little.
Yeah, feel like some. He kinda watches the weather long. Pretty sure, you know, it would give top rain or something like that. When he gets through, don't mow it for about a month after he gets through.
Is that what he thinks if that, that's gonna help?
Yeah, yeah, at least for a month, so make sure, you know, it all goes through, and go along more than that, be a lot of other bases. That's a little rad on that. That's all I got.
How, how tall is that grass? How tall is the weeds out there right there?
Right, um, somewhere at least five, at least five.
So, biggest is that tall?
It, it's gonna be hard mowing.
I think so. Why, why not? Why, we wait till it's, till the least that crops.
Well, wet seltzer this morning, frost might not be that tall. Well, sit one in my office.
It's, it's not gonna grow that, probably this late in the year, not gonna grow that much. Like frost on, I ain't be, bad, mow it dry on it, put a can on it, cooling deep, I mean, cooling in it. That dry, red.
Yeah.
Lot worse than. Long, late, long enough, let it go down.
Let it get down in the root system?
Yeah. He said that, that, you know, see what kind of field you're gonna get, and then you go back, do the thing that he did, spot it, right, and then, I didn't see any of this.
He spread it.
What?
Four weeks, that way it's getting?
Yeah, that two, four weeks.
You know, all the way. Well, if we got back into the street country, we're about mason this way, every field that looked like it probably set out for a minimum of a year. I mean, there's been a number of them that I saw where they had gone in there and plowed, so weed on them, had those little skeets over, and it just apparently sat there for probably a year at the most.
See, I feel that, you know, when you have a service right past the service house, that big plow. Again, skeet massage.
Yeah, yeah. That's, uh, usually Martin, Fred Martin, like, yeah, yeah, I noticed that.
That Fred, was it Fred?
I don't know. And it's just, you know, it's, had weed on it, I spoke last year, and this summer, the little skeets come up, they're two, two and a half feet tall. But it, it's like this all the way down? Anything else, please?
Yes, uh, Philip Hill with Swenson Water asked me if we had a copy of what the grant paid for on their water line, the billing. Do we have the copies of that?
I do not know. I have to go through this one.
Okay, because they're, they're looking to see if they pre-purchased a backflow valve.
I was gonna say what I.
They thought that because of the grant, but they didn't get one, so. He, he needs a copy of whatever the, the bills that the county, that the county paid for them.
I'll literally say what I, I, I'll just.
That's all.
Jim? Uh, did we find out anything on the light job? That, uh.
Not yet.
Not yet.
We just got all the, the transformers in here. Since we got the transformers, I haven't had time to dig them up. We'll start that next year, too.
It's gonna be a pretty good process, too.
Yeah.
Dig what? Dig each light in for what?
Yeah, dig each transformer.
Really?
Is, does that thing really work like that guy explained to me, like a?
No, it doesn't.
I just couldn't, I, I, I could not fathom that that being set up like that, where you get one light out, and they all go out. That makes no sense.
Is that what you're saying, one, one transformer down there says, knocks the whole system off?
It does not, no, it does not.
See, that's the way that guy from, from the left described it to me, old phone here, you know, he said, just like the old Christmas light, like, I think, sure not. But he said he talked to a technician, and that's the way it was described to him, but.
Probably got a main line bad.
Yeah.
Where it, for a transformer connects to a main line.
Yeah.
We may have to dig up everywhere to find that. The, the transformer itself, one light going out will not cause the whole thing to go out. But it hooks from the main line to a pigtail on each one of them, and the connection is probably what's bad on one of them.
On one of them, and it kills the connection all the way on down.
Right, but just because of the light itself, or the, or the transformer that goes out, that don't.
That don't put the whole thing out.
It's the main line somewhere, but I have no idea where.
Well, whole room, that's it?
I think so. All of them, eh?
Yeah, they're all out.
Yeah, what he said was, the best way to do it is start, if you know where, the kind of the center is.
I don't know.
I don't know where, I don't know where to. I mean, I don't have, I wouldn't have a clue which way that thing makes the move.
Let me, let's say, put these both.
And we'll do three feet.
Replace one, and then, uh, there's.
There's an internal replacement.
Ain't no way to get by that, without them, is the way that system is, you know?
That's why that system is, yeah.
I don't know, I, that, that just kinda boggles the mind, why that, we put in like that? You know, if you want the lights to operate DC, you have to come out of your main control box with DC current to go to the lights. I just don't. There's no chance.
But couldn't they put a main transformer up there as a box or something?
Well, hey, and then just come out.
Run out of water.
With DC current then, and just tie the lights together, instead of having a, coming out with AC current and converting it to each light.
You gotta remember, this is FAA.
That's true. That's true.
They have to approve everything, even the parts we buy at FAA, they're able to mark the parts, parts available. FAA is the one that kind of follows rules on that.
We'll be a smooth deal.
I bet.
Anyhow, we're, we're, we're working on it.
I bet if man went back now, he'd get one, since now, I bet wouldn't be that familiar, I bet we're gonna prove it, since that deal.
Well, I would hope they have, but I don't know.
Patty, you have any?
No, sir.
Andy?
No.
Well, now we're gone, so I don't have a whole lot to say, so, I was gonna ask about spraying, so we go to that. Uh, talk to Lighty Cook before they, uh, so we approved their bid on roof, they're about, and some dead workers in the schedule, need to get back with them when they're going to that time. Like I say, I was out of the office from Wednesday on last week, so I'm not talking, I don't have any time to report on it yet, but, but, it's, it's getting worked into their schedule, so, they'll be here. Uh, contact the folks at the courthouse security, uh, made one little addition on that thing in our negotiation, we're gonna put a backup monitor at Sheriff's Office. We'll have one here, but, uh, I asked him about that, and he said, without the education we had, either by our vangos or something, and this system here would be to our benefit to have a backup. It's not, not too terrible. What it did, it had a forty-two inch monitor on it, had to reduce that to thirty-two inch on each one of them, and I have no idea why, but. If I could get two thirty-two inch monitors to grill them more than one forty-six, so the cost was, wasn't a whole lot different, so, we're gonna do that.
And then monitor, we're gonna have to have two in here.
We just have two, uh, one, one monitor here.
You have one monitor?
You can, you can, you can monitor all, all of the cameras.
Picture in.
Back on, yeah, yeah, with screen, you know, what I understand is, but we're, we're, the sheriff, and he said, they, they'd make room over there, and we'll put up that second monitor over there with the equipment to broadcast it over there, that way we've got a backup. Made that one modification, uh, again, he said, they're, because of the increased interest in court, in courthouse security now, they're running behind like everybody else, and he said, they've just worked in, it may be as much as ninety days, but they're. And in the process, I'm about to move the, I'm about to get this, this plate case moved out, clear that foyer up. Ricky and I will figure a way to move that murder. Um, I still not heard from Texas dot aviation on our proposal out there, I will call them this week. And see if I can find out how we need to proceed from here to get that in the, in the process started.
He talked about a couple of weeks, he'd have.
Yeah, that's what, that's what he indicated, he'd have that reported, and we'd hear from him, and, and, because if I understood him correctly, what he and Chris talked about out there, that method of fixing that thing would be in his report, and we should hear something about that. Because he was gonna recommend the approval of doing it, in, in that method, that we could kind of have the funds to do, but I've not heard anything from him yet, so I'll call this week. See if we can get that process started, yeah.
Is that to fix the airport?
Yes.
On my.
Yeah. And that's all we had, I, I, we got too quick, and, and, and I apologize for being, uh, uh, not as prepared as I could be today, which is because of, like, you thought I've gone all week last week, didn't get it, but yesterday afternoon, so. If anything I missed this week, I will have in there next time, but we have our new budget tax rate, all of that is done, put to bed for another year, I think everyone is pleased and glad they're on making that process run smoothly, is what made it run.
When are we on to turn it on?
Uh, they, they have, probably in November, that's, that's when they, they normally try to get out, is in November. You guys have anything else?
They're going swindles.
They're going swindles, yeah.
The swindles.
I believe I'd have to change that.
I'd have to, in that soon.
Uh, unless someone has something else, we're down to item number eleven.
Motion is yours.
A motion second, got a second, all in favor?
If you guys will bring in your budget number.
We are, do what?